Good evening. I call this meeting to order. It's a special meeting, September 10th, 2018, of the York County School Board. Last meeting, we had, the board had voted on our norms and protocols, but the purpose of this meeting is to discuss those norms and protocols document, in case there are any changes we'd like to make to that. We can do that and then vote at the next meeting to implement those changes. So just to give a little recap of this, this is from our June retreat that the board had, and we all worked on over, over these board norms, and agreed that we would vote at the first meeting and contact me over the summer if there were any issues, but we still evidently need to work on, on some of those, those norms or protocols. These norms and protocols are done regionally, and we actually got a, I guess I want to say a sample document from the Virginia School Board Association. That's where we started, and then we went from there to model it or mold it to fit our needs, and that's what we're still doing. So that's what we'll work on tonight. I don't know that there's a need to go over each individual one. I think since we've worked on it so much for that one day, I think, just me personally, that we can just hit the, the ones that board members have issues with. Is that okay with the pleasure of the board? Is that okay? So I guess we'll start down at the end with Mr. Medford, and then work my way up back to me, I guess, is the easiest way. Did you have any that you wanted to address or anything, Mr. Medford?
I just remember there were a couple that rose to the surface that we wanted to discuss, but I don't remember what all they were.
Okay. So you want to-
We spent a lot of time to build this document as we see it now, but if it needs some tweaking, then let's figure out what those were and discuss them, I guess.
Okay. All right. Sounds good. Mr. Anderson?
I have two, actually.
Okay.
One is the first one.
Okay.
So can you explain that, or what your interpretation is of what that means, acting as one? What do you mean by that?
My interpretation of that, and I think Ms. Haywood said it best, that we should act as a cohesive board and work with one another. We may not always agree with one another, and we can certainly disagree at meetings, but it's certainly better for a board to work together and communicate and come to a decision. I think when you read the, "We will speak candidly and courteously to each other and listen to dissenting or different viewpoints at an open mind." We will help each other to depersonalize disagreements. Once we reach a decision or compromise as a board, we will each support the will of the board in word and deed. I guess when I read that, I'm thinking, when we're trying to make a decision about an issue, per se, that comes up to the board to vote on a policy, because that's what we're here to do, to guide policy, that's what that's about.
If I may add to that, I think a lot of it came for me from learning the role in my early years, VSBA training, but we're each five, and our life differences are different. I come to the table with different beliefs than you do, and, and that's because our upbringing was so different. But we have to hear each other out. If something, you all hear me always talk about diversity in administrators, school health, and you all read the propaganda. Barbara, be quiet. But that, those are issues strong to me, but I want you all to understand where I'm coming from, agree or disagree on the issues or the, the stance that we take on various issues, and speak as one. I can't go out and say to the community, "I am going to go get X number of teachers here that speak to diverse," that's not me. I guess what I'm saying is that we all have concerns, and we all have the ability to voice those concerns. Well, ideally, ideally, in the, in the, in the best world possible, when we go forward, we go forward as a group, if at all possible, but we should hopefully seek consensus somewhere along the line and speak as a body, speak as a body, excuse me. And I say that because I think we can accomplish a lot more if we can do that. That, that's my take on it. Mr. Richardson, I, again, one of the first things with, with training was, I have no surprises, and when they say no surprises, if I'm going to vote no to an issue, and I may be the only one voting to an issue, I'll tell you all ahead of time, I'm voting no. I won't sit there and surprise you when you think it's going to be a, I have no issue with something, and all of a sudden, "No, I don't like it." I won't do that to you. So again, a lot of it is courtesy, respect where the board is, respect where I am on issues, and where we each are on issues, but how can we take those differences and come together in a, with really a majority to get the job done for students? Hopefully I have, I hope I haven't muddied the water. Does that make sense to you, Michael?
It does.
And I want to thank, and I'm, I'm going to make a general comment. I am not one that does a lot with social media. I'm probably the one on the board that's the least one doing it. I just don't have time. And what I was hearing was, we are making promises that we can't, as a board, that we each have a vote, we each have a vote, and when we vote on something, it's a 5-0, 4-1, 3-2, for anything to pass, and then we support the majority. I remember many years ago, bus drivers asked me to come to Bruton, get on the bus and talk to them, and I made it clear, I will come talk. I'm bringing my pen and paper, and that's all I will do, is listen, write your notes down, and take it back. I can't make promises. I can't do that. So I don't have the ability to do that. I don't. So I think for me, the last meeting was, when the full discussion came, I, I was playing catch-up, because I didn't know what was truly, unless somebody else told me what was going on, and that's why the concern, and that's why we're here now, I think, talking about issues that were raised at the last meeting.
No, I'm not going to rehash the last meeting.
Okay, that's fine.
I'm not, because, you know, what was said was said, and it's, it's time to move on. But I will tell you this, if somebody was telling you that I was on social media making promises, they were incorrect.
Okay. But I'm just saying, we as, regardless of that, we as individuals can't make promises. We are a board of five, and the majority rules, even there were two dissenters, and they're according to Robert's Rules of Order. If the majority rules that we are supposed, so those dissenting are supposed to support the majority, and you pick up and you move on. So that's where-
Yeah, I get it.
Are you comfortable with number one? Are you, are you willing to support number one?
Yeah, I am. I just wanted to hear what the board's interpretation was. I know how I interpret it, but I wanted to make sure that if, if there was a difference, that there was clarification, that's all.
Yeah.
But I don't want to, I guess my concern was, and this sort of leads into my second one, which is the bottom bullet, was that I was going to be forced to always go along with the board and always get consensus, you know, because that's just not possible. If that's what you're seeking, then this board is ineffective.
It's not, and I think that was discussed at our retreat, that, like Barbara said, there may be a time where we're not in agreement to it, and if we know that's a consensus and that's the way it's going to go, we may vote yes, or we may tell you, "Hey, I'm going to vote no on this, because of this reason, I just don't agree with it." And I certainly, you're right about that. There's, there's no way we're going to always-
Exactly.
-agree on every issue.
I don't think we want to, because I think we're more effective as a board when we all have differing opinions and differing perspectives. We come together and we share those, and then we come up with a unified response. It may not be what you want, or what I want, or what he wants, but, you know, we've heard all the others, and we've agreed, okay, this is probably the most, the best compromise, or the best outcome for us as a group. And then I think the key is just, you know, ultimately, that's what we need to, we need to act as one, and on that, once we've come together with that. That's the way I see it.
Are there any you'd like to modify or change?
On that point?
Well, we're, we're starting with Mr. Anderson, so.
No, but I would like to discuss the last bullet.
Okay.
The last sentence, "A considerable work or time is required to generate data." The full board must endorse this request. So can someone define considerable work or time?
I would say-
Then I'll, then I'll explain why I'm asking.
I mean, my interpretation, I know it's going to take days or weeks to research something, that they're going to have to drop everything they got to do, that that should be something that the board is going, okay. And I think we've discussed this before, too, just me and you talking, that many times when I've asked for requests, when I was brand-new on the board, I would just go, well, here's what I'm looking for. Oh, is that all you need? Well, here, here it is. Whereas I would ask the, you know, the question, and it was going to be, wow, it's going to take, you know, a week to get that, or we may not have that report available to us. So that's my interpretation, was it's going to take days and weeks of extra staff time that they may not have time to do, but if it's certainly needed for an issue, or something that needs to be addressed, I think that's where the board members should come together and go, well, wait, we do need this.
So I went back and looked at all my notes since I've been on the board, and nobody's, including myself, believe it or not, has asked for anything that's going to take considerable work or time. I think the closest thing was back in May, when none of us knew that the recess committee had been formed, for example. When I asked during the meeting, hey, you know, can you look at this? Can you see, you know, how we can progress with the recess and all that, the first words were, what, you know, you don't have more consensus. So my, I have two concerns regarding this bullet, okay? Since number one says we can speak candidly. My two concerns are this. One, after the last meeting, do you really, really think I'm going to get consensus on anything? And that's a rhetorical question. And two, I'm not saying that Dr. Shandor would do this, but who's to say that I would make a request, and he's like, ah, you don't have consensus, did not do it. So those are, those are my concerns, because this is, this is why, this is why I have concerns, okay? I speak their language. I was a college professor, okay? So when they speak, I understand what they're, I'm not saying that you guys don't, but I understand it at a high level. I'm loyal to two things on this board. I'm loyal to my voters in my district. I'm loyal to the academic processes of York County schools, and we have great academic processes. You know, our academic processes in place now are what allows and provides our students an opportunity to perform at the high level that they perform. I'm thoroughly convinced that our academic processes are so good, that you could take the teacher pay down to zero, completely unmotivate the teacher, but some teachers would have, still have such a passion for teaching. They could take those academic processes, as unmotivated as they were, incorporate them and use them, and our students would still perform at a higher level because of these academic processes. But just because we have great academic processes and we perform well, and we do perform well, if you don't believe me, wait till the presentation coming up. I've looked at the data. I've been studying it for a week, you know, it's, it's phenomenal. That doesn't mean we shouldn't be in a constant state of change or looking for ways to improve. We should be in a constant state of improvement, okay? So when I ask a question or I seek information, I'm not asking just to ask or to cause anybody more work. I'm asking to see if there is a way that the answer provided is going to give us an opportunity to somehow improve these academic processes. And so if I have to sit here and wait, for lack of a better term, for y'all's permission to seek information, that's not why my voters put me in office. They didn't put me in office to gain consensus. They put me in office for three things: ask questions, be a leader, take action, because that's what I promised, and I'm trying to do that. But I feel like if I have to, if I ask something that's going to be interpreted, to take a considerable amount of work or time, and I have to wait for your permission, or your consensus, or your agreement.
And, and I think that was the, the concern, and just like Gina said from VSBA, when she was down, she talked about power and authority. We have the power to do a lot of things as elected officials. We don't necessarily have the authority, because it takes a group of five of us to make those decisions, and I certainly understand that. I, I just would be concerned, again, that we would be putting staff under the gun to, you know, create reports or do research and do this on a multitude of things, and they can't do their job. We have the superintendent that works for us, not the staff. They work for him. So I see your side of it. I certainly understand where you're coming from, but we don't have to get down in the weeds of the-
I'm not trying to, and I don't-
Well, I, that's the way I see it, but-
Well, then you don't know the questions that I ask them after the meetings. I take notes, and I send Dr. Shandor an email with questions, and a lot of times he answers them. If, if he doesn't answer them, he gets the appropriate person to answer. And I always tell, I always caveat it, look, it's, it's not a, not a big deal. You don't have to drop everything and answer my question, but I just want an answer. But I just want everybody to know I'm not asking lightly, okay? I'm asking for a specific reason, and that reason is to ultimately try to use that information to help improve our academic process. That, that's it.
Right. But see, I look at it, that's the superintendent's job.
What's the superintendent's job?
To improve the academic process, to run the school division, to, you know, to, to make sure that things are being done right. It's, it's not that we shouldn't ask the questions. We certainly should ask the questions, should we have them.
Can I, can I weigh in just for one sec?
Go ahead, Dr. George.
Well, I, I don't know if we're getting a little off track, but I, I think-
Yeah, we're probably getting off track.
Michael, I, I agree 100%. You need to be able to ask questions. I mean, that's why we're on this board. So, you know, it would bother me greatly if any of the board members felt like they couldn't request information. I don't know specifically what took place. I don't know if that's ever been a problem at this point, and it, maybe, maybe it has, but we need to be able to ask questions. I mean, so I don't want you to feel like that's not something that Michael Anderson can do. I mean, so really, I sincerely mean that. I'm just wondering in my mind, if, if it's ever a situation where maybe we've made a decision on something, you know, we've already covered something, and we're, we're going back and rehashing it. Now, that might be a situation where you go, well, look, that's going to take a lot of staff time. We've already been over that. We've already kind of closed that chapter. I don't know. This is all hypothetical. I don't know. But that, maybe I could see, but, you know, asking a question, I, I don't think any, I mean, I don't want to speak for the board members, but-
So Dr. George and Mr. Anderson, what would be your suggestion, then, to modify this bullet for the board then?
Where were you?
Where we're at the last one, maintain open communication with each other, administration and community at large. I think it's the last part, "The full board must endorse the request of-"
For our board chair.
"-if considerable work time or time is required to generate data."
Before, before we go there, I think Dr. Shandor wanted to-
Yeah, he wanted to weigh in.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're fine. You're fine. My question was going to be, what, you know, you all ask questions. You ask questions, and you've asked questions for years, and Mr. Anderson's asked questions since he's been on the board, like he should, and just like all of you should. You know, my question that I, or my comment that I brought up June 8th was, what information haven't we provided? So we've, I've either answered the question, passed it on to one of these four folks, or Ms. Skinner or Dr. Vladu to answer questions, or Dr. Butler, who is somewhere. So we always strive to answer those questions. I think that when you get down to it, the last part where it's, "Generate data, the full board must endorse the request," it's one of those things, for me, we're always pushing, regardless if we're number one in 13 out of 17 areas in the region, or whatever that looks like in the state. We're always pushing. We, we know that, and, and I feel like that's our team, and that's how we, we're, we're driven by that continued push. My job as superintendent is to continually remind staff and remind board members, here's our strategic plan. Here's the strategies we have outlined. What's the purpose of the information? Because sometimes we can help rephrase. Ms. Haywood may ask a question, and when she's asking, we may say, well, this is, I think, what you're getting to, to what you want, because sometimes it's complex, and there's a lot of information. So, you know, we, we don't tell board members you can't have information. You know, when I first got here, I think it was exit surveys, Ms. Haywood. You, you guys wanted to view those? We, we served them right up my first day on the job. So we, we're an open book, and sometimes it is time, and sometimes it's during the year. If Dr. James is working on, you know, the CIP and FMP, and we ask him for a particular report, time-wise, it may take a little longer to get it, because he's, you know, a one-man show with a few other directors. So, but we've never, we've never, at least I can speak for four years now, we've never said, no, we're not going to-
And I want to make it very, very clear that your office is phenomenal at providing information. I have never not had a, a question answered. So I don't want you to think that, that I'm, I'm happy with that. Sometimes I have to chuckle, because I'm looking for, you know, a very simple answer, and I get this, right? And that's great, because the information that's ultimately provided is more than what I was asking, and it, and it makes me think, okay, well, I didn't think of that, so I'm glad that I have it. So don't think that I'm unhappy with that. I've worked in process management, process improvement. I'm hung up on that word "must." That is a very, very powerful word, and I've worked with accrediting agencies. I worked, I worked on the, I was a co-chair of the Southern Association of Colleges and Schools Accreditation Committee for our university. That word "must" is very, very powerful, and it makes a lot of difference in the way that things are interpreted, the way that things are implemented, the way that people act, respond, however you want to put it. So I, I guess, to, to use your word, Robbie, and get down into the weeds, I'm hung up on that word "must." That, that's, that's what's, can we change it to "should seek?" Or something like that?
If you think about this, it says, "We'll maintain open, open communication with each other, administration, and the community at large. Information shared with one board member will be shared with all members. If considerable work or time is required to generate data." I mean, at that point, if you look at this, we've already talked to each other. We've communicated with each other. We ought to have some sort of a request that is already sort of agreed upon, right? I mean, I don't know why we all have to have five different requests. I mean, if we're talking and communicating with each other, come up with a-
I think, I just, I mean, I'm listening to everybody talk, and I look at it as, what's the end? And Jimmy, you kind of touched on it earlier in your conversations, and that is, I mean, when you ask, when I ask questions, I'm going to let the superintendent know the reason why I'm asking the questions. What, what am I seeking? What am, what have I heard in my community from my constituents, or, or what has bubbled up for some teachers, or something I picked up at a national conference, or a state conference? And I bring that to the superintendent and say, okay, here's something that I have heard about, or want to explore, or this may be, is this something that would benefit YCSD? And then my questions start to kind of fall in, because sometimes I don't even know how to craft the question, because this is where I want to find out if we can go to. So how do we kind of build it backwards, I guess? And it works well for me, and I'm sure maybe others do the same thing. I just don't go, I don't ask questions just to ask them, those, I mean, without the superintendent knowing why I'm asking the questions. The full board must, I mean, if we're hung up on that little piece right there, I think that once again, if this, if the superintendent has given the information of, hey, this is something that I picked up at a national conference, it might be, let's use the IB program, for example, go back all the way when Don Felling was on this board, and he brought that concept, I believe, from a conference or something, and brought it to the attention of Dr. Staples, and it started working from there, and then all of a sudden, the program was, over time, was developed. I don't think the whole board, I don't know how that, you know, I don't know how it worked. Everybody had to come to some agreement at some point to say, okay, this is going to take, you know, this is a major project. It's going to take a considerable amount of time to start looking and exploring this. I don't know.
Okay. Barbara, do you have a suggestion?
Will you do, will you do more?
Yeah, I'm done. I don't even have a question there.
The first sentence, "Information shared with one board member will be shared with all members," and that's saying that whatever one person is asking for, that one person plus all the others will get that information. The hang-up seems to be, "If considerable work or time is required to generate data," not to say you're not going to get it, but if it's the considerable work and time is required, the full board must endorse the request, and that's the part I'm hearing, and I don't think one applies to the other. Can we take the full board must endorse the request, take that out? "If considerable time or work is required to generate data, then an, then an agreeable time for the completion of the work must be stated." That's not to say you're not going to get it.
Right.
Or the full board says you got to get it, but it's coming, but at an agreeable time, knowing where the superintendent is with his staff and what's going on. That's just to say, if it's something that you want, and you can't get it right away, fix it. The person will tell you, well, let us get through this project first, and then I'll get that information. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Don't be as formal to say that consider, if considerable work and time is required to generate the data, the full board must endorse it. That's, that's the hang-up piece, I think I'm hearing from the discussion. Would that solve it, to say-
Mr. Anderson?
So you're-
I'm saying, if considerable work or time is required to generate data, then an agreeable time for the completion is to be established. Not to say you don't get it, but gives a time, you know, give me a week to get it to you.
It takes out the full board-
Give me a month to get it to you.
Endorse the request. It takes that part out.
Right. The full board must endorse. You still will get the information you want. We'll all get it, but it may not be as speedy as you want it.
I come back to thinking that, let's say he has a project in mind, an idea, something that's going to be wonderful for Y, for YCSD. So he, you know, I kind of want to know that ahead of time, because that way I can look into that, you know. So wouldn't the, is it a project-based data that we're looking for? I mean, this, but now we're getting into particulars, but a simple data request is, I don't think we're talking about here.
But I'm thinking that's where superintendent comes in, because superintendent will know what he's after and, and can help guide that.
So if I could just add, the two things I would ask, and one, what's the purpose of the request? Well, what are we trying to get to? What, so that will help me figure out what information that we can get to you. And then the second thing is, my question back to the board member, or board, would be, is this aligned with your strategic plan? So if we're going to align resources with our strategic plan and time working on something, is it aligned? So, you know, what are we trying to get to? What's the purpose of it? But more importantly, is this aligned with the strategic plan? What you don't want to do on a board, we haven't had this, is have Jimmy have one idea about something outside, Robbie has something different, I'm sorry, Dr. George has something different, Ms. Haywood has something different, Mr. Anderson, and then it's very difficult for a superintendent to direct staff if we're going in a number of different ways. I think that might be why Gina Patterson and they had that last comment, the board must endorse the request, whether it's the majority of the board, but to me, those are the two questions. What's the purpose, and is it aligned with the board's strategic plan?
And I think that should happen if you're doing this, if you're sharing the information, and you're communicating. I mean, it ought to be a, a natural progression. We talk about it as, is this something that-
And with, Mr. Medford, with your comment, it would be shared, because there's open communication, so you would know right off the bat, I mean that.
Right. And for a disadvantage to a new board member, too, that they weren't here for that strategic planning, you know-
Right.
-building of that, or rebuilding, or tweaking of that. So it does throw a thing in here that's, that's a little different, that we have to be sensitive to, but how long can I get away with using the new board member tag?
It's new.
Can I ask one question? Just, and again, this is just for consideration, where it says, "If considerable work time is required to generate data," maybe board, the board will have a discussion related to the topic? It doesn't mean endorse, it just means have a discussion, so we can get to the why, and to the strat plan, you know, where does it fall into the strat plan? So maybe-
That's reasonable.
Maybe leads to discussion as a way to remedy.
Must discuss the request.
And I think that's where Mr. Medford was going with his comments, but I want to park there for just a second. So do I communicate my idea to the chairman, and he communicates it to the rest of the board, or do I communicate my idea to each individual board member? How, what's the preference there?
I think if you flip over to page one, the very first one says, "Developing the board agenda." Agenda is drafted by the chairman and the superintendent. Then placing them on the agenda would be board members should contact the chairman with any items added to the agenda. So, to me, that would be...
You may not even have gotten to the agenda. I'm hearing...
I understand that.
I'm just thinking that would be...
This topic. See, I think, I, I would think you may wanna pick up the phone and call, call Jimmy. I still, you know, I still will not say you can't call superintendent. But, but have that dialogue, but say, Jimmy, I just talked to the superintendent, or I'm gonna talk to the superintendent. But you all three need that communication. Or if I had something, I'm gonna say to Jimmy instead of Vic. This is, these are some thoughts.
No, I, I understand that. My, my question was regarding communicating to the other board members. Is it the preference of the board that the information or the request, or whatever it is that I'm seeking or Mark or whomever, contacts each individual board member? Or contacts the chairman and/or the co-chairman or chairwoman to get that information disseminated, disseminated to the other members of the board?
That would depend on if it's a project.
Or does it matter? As long as people get it?
I think if it's a big project that you would like to, like, I think you used a good example of the IB program that one of the board members wanted to do. And you have a phenomenal idea, Mr. Anderson, to do something. I think you should contact each one of the board members to let them know what you're looking at. I think there's no surprises then. That, that's just my opinion, how, how I think it would flow easy, whether it's through an individual email, through its individual phone call, or when you talk to them individually, just to communicate that with them, I think, would be appropriate.
And if you think it's something important, that's where your passion for something that you think is important comes through. And can you get other people to see where you're coming from and to support it, too? It helps with that.
I get it.
I remember Barbara, yeah, I remember Barbara when she worked on getting far ends in the clinics instead of the LPS. It was gonna cost more money, obviously, and take some time. I remember getting phone calls.
I was relentless on that one, guys.
I mean, she had already been in contact with superintendent and staff and stuff, but still was convincing the rest of the board at the time to say that the money invested into this will pay off in the long run. And it has. It took forever to get it done, but it did.
Does that help?
It does.
So, with the one change on that last bullet to say, take out the full board must endorse the request to the board, we'll discuss it?
You have time established for, yeah, whatever.
I'm sorry, would...
Yeah, what Barbara said, how did you put it? Put it so editively.
I just said if considerable time or work is required to generate data, I'm not saying the whole board has to get into it, but I think there should be an agreeable timeframe for completion of that task. And it can be wordsmithed, some, to make it flow better. But I don't wanna say you, you have to get the full board's consensus to generate the data, but at least there be a timeframe, suitable timeframe. I can remember saying to past superintendents, if I need information to vote on something, I should be able to answers, ask as many questions that will help me get the knowledge base so I know how to vote on something. And I see that along this way. I'm not saying that you can't have the information.
Right.
Or if you don't have, if the board doesn't support it, doesn't endorse it, you're not gonna get the information. I don't want that to be a negative piece.
Yeah.
I want to say you will still get it. We all will get it. But if it's considerable work and time, then we just put timeframe to it.
So, Ms. Ford has it written down, as we discussed. And what'll happen is we'll send that out after this meeting to the board members this week. And that way, if there's some more discussion that needs to be done, we will do it. But if not, everybody's good with it. We can make the modification at our next meeting for this. So, Mr. Anderson, you said you had two. Was that the second one?
It was.
Okay, thank you.
But again, I want to emphasize to Dr. Shandor and his staff that I've never been denied information. And I'm very happy, sometimes ecstatic with the responses that I get from you and members of your staff. So, I just want you to know that.
Thank you, guys. All right, Ms. Haywood, any that you have?
I, I shared my concerns with you at the last meeting, but the more I have talked to you all, I had concerns. And I've talked to Dr. Shandor, and I guess because I've been the most senior person on the board. I, I will go into schools when I get a personal invitation, email, a letter to come for certain events. I may not say to the rest of you or to, to the superintendent, I'm going, I'll go. I'll let the principal know, yes, thank you for inviting me. I will, I won't be there. I was having concerns, and, and I'll go back with my history. I know I just don't pop into a school unannounced. That will cause more chaos than anything else. When I was a parent, I was always in schools. And teachers knew me as a parent, principals knew me as a parent. But I was having, and I'm on that third page, I believe...
You are.
Bullets, how, when, and whom to notify.
Right.
When visiting schools, type those three together.
You're on page three.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Board members should call or email the superintendent, giving a one-week notice if possible. When volunteering a school should notify the superintendent prior to volunteering a school's not as a parent. And then, how and when, whom to notify attending school events, concerts, sporting events. Board members are encouraged to attend school events. If possible, let the principal know prior to attending.
Can I make one suggestion? So, the squinting, and I have my glasses on, that's a bad sign.
The how, when, and who.
Where it says, how, when, and whom. I, I'm comfortable with giving 24 to 48 hours notice versus one week. I think the thing there is, just make, you know, for us, it's making sure we have an administrator in the building who will be available to meet your needs at the school whenever that request comes. And look, if a principal calls you to invite you to something, by all means, go.
Yeah, I don't see that as applying here.
That's, that's not an issue whatsoever. But popping into a school, if our folks are in IEP meetings or if they're behind closed doors and you show up in the, in the front office, we wanna make sure there's somebody available for you. So, if you give us some notice, you know, 24 to 48 hours, then we can schedule a time to make sure that we have someone available for you. I think that would be, would that be okay with you?
Yes. And like I said, the more, what I've, we, yes, we've gone over it in the past, but sometimes when you get the final document in front of you and you read it, you have other thoughts. The more I have talked to people, the more I have shared with you all, with, with Dr. Shandor and it's, and just other people, thoughts on this. I'm okay with this. I think we just respect it and, and go with it.
And Ms. Haywood, just to point out, too, when we were creating or modifying or formulating this document for us, when we did the part about school board, school board members are encouraged to attend school events if possible, let the principal know prior to attending. I go to football games on occasion.
Yeah, and I won't.
And I don't call them ahead of time. I'll let them know when I get there. I always try to seek out the principal, shake their hand, introduce, you know, talk to them.
So, if possible, stay for that.
Yeah, if possible. So, I mean, that's, at first, I was a little concerned with that, too, when we were developing this. But then I looked at it and went, well, when I go to, when I go to the school, I always seek out the principal anyway, so it's, it's done. It doesn't say it has to be done weeks or months ahead of time because we're encouraged to attend those events. And I think it's just a courtesy, common courtesy thing that's put in there. And that's the way I eventually interpreted this. So, I was good with it. So, I just wanted to point that out that...
I think they also like to recognize you all when you're there. And so, that's why it's important for them to know. They don't want to have an event and you're there and they don't recognize you.
Absolutely. Ms. Haywood, did you have anything else other than the 24 to 48 hour thing?
No, I, I'm, I'm okay with everything else.
Okay. And Dr. George?
Yeah, I, really nothing lengthy at all. I just will say, spoken about, you know, one voice as a board. You know, if we speak, the chairman will speak as the official voice of the board. I mean, that always is pretty much safe, a safe way to go. You can't go wrong with that. You know, this part about mindful of different roles and responsibilities throughout the school system, what roles that we play as individuals, citizen, parent, you know, it just reinforces that we're all different. Some of us are parents with kids in the school, some of us were. We have different roles, different things that we bring to the board. And so, I think it's, it's important to, to understand that, remember that, and communicate that with each other. And so, no, that's about, that all I, what I had, so...
And then one last thing, if I may add. Jimmy, I think we use different terminology, but this is governance norms and protocols. It's not policy. It's roles, norms, and protocols of how we should conduct ourselves, not policy.
Right. And that's, that's what I kinda opened this special meeting with, just to, to mention that there's many school boards that have these. So, we're not, this isn't brand new to anybody. This is brand new to us, I think. So, it's a good guide for new members coming on. It's a good guide for me because they didn't like me on a few things. So, I, I think it's a, a good guideline that the VSB helped us, helped us design. So, was there any other discussion on this?
Just the last piece I'll go in is that if, as we put these to practice and any one of us finds something that was stumbling, not working the way we anticipated it to work, then we revisit it, come back to it.
Exactly.
But this is, when we start putting this into practice, it works, actually, when it's really gonna, rubber hits the road, we're doing most of it anyways.
No, I even think this will help when we look at how we evaluate ourselves. This is the standard document that will help with that, too.
Well, 'cause we, we can be called upon to say, hey, you know, on our norms and protocols, it says this, and you refer back to it to keep us back in line and keep us in check. Me even, so this year as chairman, to keep me in check, too.
When you, when you asked me earlier, I thought I was just talking about the norms. I didn't know if my turn also included the protocols, so I...
Yeah, go, go right ahead. Absolutely. I was doing both at the time, so...
One, two, number four on the second page. So, I'd give you the history of that and how it originated and the reasoning behind it.
My understanding, again, this is something that, that I was alluded to when I came on the board. But it does, it does keep down any, any issues of, you know, arguing back and forth that you're just not accomplishing anything. The citizens come there to speak. We let them speak. We listen to them. If we try to, you know, sometimes they may not speak to a specific topic that we wanna cover or we're covering at the time. But I don't know that during a public meeting is the time to address that, you know, to, to address the individual. I think after the meeting, if we wanna approach them and talk to them and say, hey, you know, here's, here's what I think. 'Cause they're only up there for three minutes, and I just don't think it does any good to, to have a banner back and forth. But that's just my, my interpretation.
So, you're, you're talking about during the time that they're speaking, not afterwards?
Yeah. Oh, not after the meeting, no. This is when they have their three minutes.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you very much. And don't get back into, to the front dialogue.
The other things, I had several. When I say several, I'm talking well into the double digits. People, voters, citizens, whom, however you wanna refer to them, read this document once it, once it came out that we were meeting on this. And they expressed concern over communication between and among board members, communication between the board members and the superintendent. And I guess their concern is by being encouraged to use phone calls, we're throwing aside transparency, which is what they're seeking.
I don't see that. So, I'm, I'm sorry. This is like just, I was, I would interpret it as like just having a casual conversation with the superintendent about. It's not, it's not a, it's not a board action or a board decision being made. It's asking those questions you were talking about earlier.
Yeah. And it, it was interesting to me because it was like, all of a sudden, there's, there's this wave of concern over transparency of the school board, transparency of the SBO. And I guess they saw these, these two protocols and had concerns that we were sort of playing into their theory that we weren't as transparent as they felt that we should be. So, I, I'm just, I'm just telling you what the concerns are.
No, no. I send a lot of emails, but if I have a concern and an issue, and I send a question to the superintendent, it may be hour before he sends it back. And then I'll have another question. I could call him in five minutes and resolve the whole thing. So, I mean, that's the type of things I'm talking about. I still email him about requests or issues. I mean, we email all the time. We actually talk almost daily as chairman. He'll, he'll give me updates on things that I may have, have questions about. But I don't, I mean, I still email, too. So, I, I think there may have been a misconception that, oh, we're just gonna phone call all the time and not put anything in writing. And that's, that's not the case, certainly. And if somebody certainly interpreted it that way, I'm, I'm sorry that they did. I apologize, but...
Don't apologize for their interpretation. That's not, that's not in your control.
Well, we maybe could have been a more, a little more clear with this document. I guess we could have. But I, to me, that's like daily operations sometimes. Again, I, I think sometimes the, the things that we talk about are a little complex and just an email just doesn't do it, you know? And to be honest with you, instead of phone calls, I'm fortunate that I live like two miles from the school board office. And on my way in and out, sometimes I'll just pop in, you know, and we'll talk. But that's just convenience for me. If I wasn't that convenient, I'd probably be doing more emails.
But the other piece I'm gonna add to it that, that came up many, many years ago and has been the same since, the, whenever you have in communication, it was an email on the issue and so forth, and you're back and forth, you're setting a meeting. You can, you can, you can make decision, you can vote on something. You can sway something. That was how it was explained to me many years ago, that when you go into a message or email message back and forth, two or three of you, you are induct, conducting meeting 'cause you have a quorum in that conversation. And that's the concern, 'cause it's not a publicized, advertised meeting. If that makes sense.
Like I said, I was just relaying concerns from citizens.
So, I, I hope they don't see that as a, a thing to keep a secret. We have to make sure we're not conducting business when it's not an advertised meeting, action items where we can vote or such. But nothing's to stop you from picking up the phone or me picking up the phone, calling you or vice versa, just two people.
We have about 10 more minutes before we need to go into the, the other meeting, our work session. But we're gonna continue on. If we need to continue this or recess this meeting and continue it afterwards, we will. So, I'm not rushing anyone. But anyway, we're gonna move on. Mr. Anderson, though?
Just one more thing, last page. When will the board conduct itself evaluation? Any plans for that?
Well, that was one of the issues that Mr. Medford had a, had a concern with how we would do that. And I think that's something that we need to, I, I, as a chair, need to sit down and look at that. And I think the easiest way to do that is to bring this document up yearly as we do when we sign our, trying to think of the thing we sign every...
Code of Ethics?
Or Code of Eth- Ethics. And I think that's an appropriate time
That's in January.
For us to, um, bring this up yearly and say, hey, you know, let's go back over this, send it out to the board. Are there any concerns, issues, you know, that we need to change anything, that sort of thing? Are we doing what this document says? As a chair, that's where, where I see, I think we can do that for our self-evaluation. That would be the appropriate way.
It was the word evaluation because, you know, we, we just, we're in the process now of evaluating superintendent. And we have a nice form to follow, a nice template. So is, is there, is there a template in place or something that?
I don't know that there's a template. I, I don't know that it has to be that formal, but, but we can. Is there a form?
Let me resurrect it. The saying, if you don't, I think I can lay my hands on it, maybe use copybook. Yes, yeah, yeah, but that was what we used, yeah.
Okay.
Well, I'm going up there on the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth.
Perfect.
So I'll ask them if that's okay with, is that okay with the board?
That would be great if you could do that. That would be wonderful.
And we just have to decide, do we do it, um, in January as we do the Code of Ethics? Or do we do it, continue with like an academic year? So that's something to look at.
Since we started at an ac- academic year, that would be the appropriate time at the first meeting in August or, or whatever the case may be. That way, just before that first meeting kicks off or even the one in September, we can email that form. If there is one, we'll find out. And we can all review it and go from there.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Um, nothing else from any other board members on the, on the document of the-
This stands as it was voted on at the last meeting.
Until we make these changes and we will vote again to make those amended changes. Ms. Ford is gonna send that out to the board members, uh, this week. You'll have a chance to review it again, those changes. If you could put those changes maybe in a bold or colored highlight so they can see that, what we've changed and, um, then we'll vote on it from there. Is that acceptable?
Yes.
All right. Um, I don't think there's any other discussion we're gonna have tonight on that. Then, uh, we're gonna go ahead and adjourn this meeting until the work session starts at six o'clock.